Call the roll by towns. Andes, Bavina.
Bavina?
Yeah.
Thank you. Bavina?
Here.
Colchester?
Here.
Davenport?
Here.
Delhi?
Here.
Deposit?
Here.
Franklin?
Here.
Hampden?
Here.
Hancock?
Here.
Marshfield?
Here.
Courtwright? Masonville?
Oh, she's on now. She's here.
She's there.
Masonville? Here?
Meredith?
Here.
Middletown? Roxbury?
Here.
Sidney?
Here.
Stanford?
Here.
Tompkins?
Here.
Walton?
Here.
And the notice appearing pursuant to county law section 151 and Board Rule 1, the organizational meeting of the Delaware County Board of Supervisors is called for the purpose of organizing for the year 2022, including election of a chairman, vice chairman, clerk of the board, county attorney, and budget officer. Any other business that may be properly brought before the board will be conducted. I ask that you please turn your attention to Mr. Marshfield for the invocation and Mr. Axton for the pledge of the flag.
As we gather this day, oh Lord, we pray that we may always be worthy of the blessings you have bestowed upon us. Guide us and temper our wisdom so that our decisions are for the betterment of our county and for the 19 towns and 46,000 residents from which we represent. Help us to make this county a better county, one that will stand out above all others. We thank you for the bounty of our earth, for the security, for our freedom of speech, our freedom to think, and our freedom to choose. Guide us throughout this new year. We pray for our families and friends who are far from us or who live with the struggles of illness or for those dealing with the pain of loss. Lead us all in your ways and bring us your healing touch. We ask these things in your name, who shares our joy, our life in joy and sorrow, death and new birth, and despair and promise. This we all pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance and flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the elections, do I have any nominations for chairman?
I'd like to move Tina Molea as chair.
Give me a second.
I think she's doing an outstanding job and her heart's in the right place, and I think she's good for Delaware County.
Any other nominations?
I move the nominations be closed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I would like to call deputy county clerk Haley Gransberry to come forward and administer the oath of office to Chairman Molea.
I, Tina B. Molee.
I, Tina B. Molee. Solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of New York, and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of chairman of the Board of Supervisors, of the office of the chairman of the Board of Supervisors, in and for the county of Delaware, and for the county of Delaware, according to the best of my ability, according to the best of my ability. And I do further solemnly swear, and I do further solemnly swear, that I have not directly or indirectly, that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, or promised to pay, paid, offered, or promised to pay, contributed or offered or promised to contribute, contribute, offered, contribute, any money or other valuable things, any money or valuable things, as consideration or reward, as consideration or reward, for the giving or withholding, for the giving or withholding, of any such vote, of any such vote, of help in God, of help in God. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Tina.
Thank you. Thank you to all my colleagues for your support, continued support. Now I would call for the election of vice chairman. Are there any nominations? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other nominations?
Move that the nominations be closed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So carried. That was just delayed, Mark. Okay, election for clerk of the board. Do I have any nominations for clerk to the board?
Krista Schaefer.
Krista Schaefer. Is there a second? Are there any other nominations?
Move that they be closed.
Okay, all in favor of Krista Schaefer, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So carried. Okay, election of the county attorney. There any nominations for county attorney? Is there a second? Jim? Are there any other nominations?
Move that they be closed.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So carried. And budget officer. Do I have any nominations for budget officer? Nominate Art Merrill, second. Are there any other nominations? Motion to close?
Yeah, move to close.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So carried. Thank you very much. I do have some things I would like to share with the board. As we begin a new year, I would like to take a moment to reflect on 2021 and look forward to 2022. We began 2021 and we ended 2020 under strict mandates and a hope that a new vaccine would bring us out of the pandemic that had crippled the world for the majority of the previous year. The promise of a vaccine and the hope that it would allow life to go back to normal allowed us to set lofty goals for 2021, including the continuation of important capital projects, the implementation of programs for social reform, and the building of our local economy. In early February of '21, Delaware County Public Health, in coordination with local pharmacies and four hospitals, began to provide vaccinations to essential medical personnel, followed quickly by the elderly immunocompromised and eventually the masses. This required all hands on deck with our limited resources. They were stretched to provide the life-saving vaccines while still handling the many infections that had continued to plague our communities. It came as no surprise to me to see county employees, members of this board, and local emergency service personnel stepping up to help in this mission. Our local leaders hosted vaccine clinics or vaccination clinics wherever they could, and several even volunteered their time to help with the clinics in support of public health. In March of '21, the Delaware County Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative Plan was presented to the board and the public to review, comment on, and adopt. Although there was certainly some that felt the plan did not go far enough, the plan was well-written and inclusive all needed and viable objectives. Ultimately, the plan was adopted and submitted to the New York State by April 1st deadline. The plan is now being used as a tool to guide our county sheriff in the important work his office handles every day. As we entered the construction season in 2021, our major capital projects progressed with the behavioral health facility being completed this fall. It is in operation and services are now being offered at their new location in Walton. The three new DPW facilities in Walton, Delhi, and Bloomville were finally approved, bid out, and are now under construction. None of these construction projects have been easy, as progress has been delayed due to COVID outbreaks and inability to get materials and the lack of additional staffing for contractors to proceed. Even with these delays, county personnel overseeing these projects were able to handle these hurdles and come up with solutions that have kept us on schedule and within budget. In addition to the new facilities being constructed, we were also able to move our veteran service agency to their new and improved location at 97 Main Street here in Delhi. These new offices provide for the space and accessibility needed to provide these important services to our veterans with the dignity and respect they deserve. We were able to see much-needed work at the Delaware County Poorhouse Cemetery. This project has been underway for several years, with each passing year posing a new threat to losing the sacred graves of our ancestors to the elements. Through the efforts of our county staff and financial support from this board, we were able to begin a long-term project that will not only preserve this sacred site but commemorate the souls that rest here, preserving our history here in Delaware County. 2021 was not without controversy. Whether it was the adoption of the police reform plan, the challenges posed by the New York City Streamside Acquisition Program, the naming of a new tourism promotion agency for 2022, the filling of graves at the Poorhouse Cemetery, or spreading of the American Relief Fund, we saw renewed interest and participation from our local residents. The interest from the general public regarding these issues have prompted the development of the Delaware County Newsletter that we launched just this fall through social media. This project is intended to keep the public informed and provide an avenue for continued public participation in our governing process. We as a board have faced difficult decisions this past year, and I stand by the decisions we made as a board. I believe we have acted in the best interest of Delaware County. We have accomplished a great deal this year while still keeping our county budget within the mandated 2% tax cap for the sixth year straight. I would also like to take a moment to remember one of our own, Jean Pinkford, that we lost this past year, leaving a void at this table for the past few months. We are happy and very pleased to honor or to welcome Eric Wilson as the new Town of Sydney supervisor, and I am looking forward to having a full board once again. As I look forward to 2022, I see much work that still needs to be done and goals to be met. We will continue to fight the pandemic, providing resources for vaccinations and supporting our local businesses and residents in their efforts to recover. There is, of course, the continuation of the construction of the new DPW facilities, as well as providing for a new and improved space for the Board of Elections at 97 Main Street. We have set goals to further preserve the Poorhouse Cemetery with the installation of grave markers and an improved access for the public to visit the site. We still continue to work on watershed issues, including the Streamside Acquisition Program, hopefully to bring us one step closer to the end of land acquisition in the west of Hudson Watership. We have a planned project to construct a new cell at the solid waste management facility and construction of a new Department of Social Services visitation center here in Delhi. We will seek to open a permanent location for the Child Advocacy Center and study the merits of developing a countywide ambulance service. Lastly, I would like to thank all of our dedicated Delaware County employees. As chairman, I've taken the time to attend committee meetings for each of our departments, and I'm always astonished by the amount of work that our employees accomplish with limited resources and staff. Like other employers, we have been faced with staff shortages, both from an inability to fill vacancies as well as absences due to quarantines, school shutdowns, and employee or family illnesses. Throughout all of this, I have personally witnessed staff commitments being met through remote working, work sharing, and support of each other between departments. We are very fortunate to have such a dedicated and resourceful employees. I've been humbled to see the camaraderie and support for each other through the department heads. Many have offered staff or resources to assist public health as they have been overwhelmed for the past two years, or each other in various capacities to meet deadlines or address issues. Delaware County has often received recognition at the state and federal levels for the team approach we take to meet the needs of our county. I attribute it to the professionalism, resourcefulness, and dedication of our very talented workforce. For that, all I can say is thank you. Okay, moving on. I will need approval of the minutes from last board meeting, meeting on December 8th. Were there any additions or corrections to those meeting minutes? If not, they will stand as submitted. Communications?
All communications have been referred to the respective committees.
Okay, there is no privilege of the floor this afternoon. Are there standing committee reports? Okay, we will move on to resolutions. Okay, resolution number one.
Ma'am, I'd like to bring this resolution to the floor and ask for its... Hold a second, yeah.
Reappointment of Director of Community Mental Health Services.
It's a voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number two.
I'd like to bring this resolution up and recommend its approval. Second.
Reappointment, Director of Economic Development.
It's a voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So carried. Resolution number three.
I'll bring it up and move for its adoption.
Reappointment of Elections Commissioner, Republican.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number four.
Reappointment of Youth Bureau Director.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number five.
I'll pull that up and move for its adoption.
Second.
Designation of Publication of Local Laws and Notices, Democrat.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number six.
I bring that up and move for its adoption.
Designation of Publication of Local Laws and Notices, Republican.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number seven.
I bring this resolution up and move for its adoption.
Designation of Depository for Delaware County Funds.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number eight.
I bring this up and move for its adoption.
Payment of Machinery Rentals.
Again, it's a voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number nine.
I'll bring resolution number nine forward and move for its adoption.
Second.
Appointment of Delaware County Fire Advisory Board.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number 10.
I'll bring resolution number 10 to the floor and move for its adoption. Second.
2021 Budget Amendment, Receipt of Donations K-9 Program.
Okay, please call the roll.
Gladstone?
Yes.
Molee?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axton?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Hankley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Seta?
Yes.
Resolution number 11.
I'll bring resolution number 11 to the floor and move for its adoption. Second.
2022 Budget Amendment, Department of Emergency Services, E-911.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Gladstone?
Yes.
Molee?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente? Tuthill?
Yes.
Axton?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel? Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Hankley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Seta?
Resolution number 12.
Bring this up and move for its adoption.
Second.
Authorization for Awards, Department of Public Works.
Are there any questions on this? Who is here? Okay, kindly call the roll.
Gladstone?
Yes.
Molee?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axton?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yep.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Hankley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Seta?
Resolution number 13.
I bring this up and move for its adoption.
Second.
Authorizing the implementation and funding in the first instance 100% of a federal aid and state marshals program aid eligible cost of a transportation federal aid project and appropriating funds therefore.
Questions? Please call the roll.
Gladstone?
Yes.
Molee?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axton?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yep.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Hankley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Seta?
Resolution number 14.
I'll bring resolution number 14 to the floor and move for its adoption. Second.
Exception to resolution number 269 of 1990, Department of Emergency Services.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number 15.
I'll bring resolution number 15 to the floor and ask for its approval. Second.
Exception to resolution number 269 of 1990, Personnel Office.
All in... Yep?
I see we do these for each department. These residents, can we just do one, a blanket one for all departments?
Linda?
Specific to the department, according to the resume from 1990. So that's why it's done by each department.
Okay.
That's how the resolution was written in 1990?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number 16.
I'd like to bring this resolution up before the board and be voted in. Second.
Conduct a Clean Heating and Cooling Campaign, Planning Department.
So this, our, Hampden has applied for this, and we need to have five participants. And so I assume the county's going to have to also seek these participants over and above what the towns do.
Okay, so yes.
Okay, it's a voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number 17.
I'd like to bring this resolution up before the board and be voted in, please. Second.
Conduct a Community Solar Campaign, Planning Department.
Questions?
I also want to say that we did this one and got our money, and it was 10 participants. I don't know if it's the same now or not, but... What's that?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
It was 10 before.
Yeah.
Voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
We have the audit? Yes. Is that the only resolution? Yep, there are not prefiled.
Okay. We have one not prefiled resolution. I will waive rule 10 without objection. Number, resolution number 18.
I will bring up resolution 18 and move for its adoption. Second.
Payment of Audit.
Kindly call the roll.
Gladstone?
Yes.
Molee?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axton?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yep.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis? Oh, Hankley, sorry about that.
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Seta?
Okay, that's it for resolution. The standing committees will remain the same until changes are announced at the next board meeting. I do have several appointments I'd like to make. Like to appoint to the Agricultural and Farmland Protection Board a four-year term ending December 31st of 2025 Fred Hunnakey. Cooperative Extension, a one-year term ending December 31st, 2022. Reappoint Supervisor Wayland Gladstone. Delaware County Industrial Development Agency. The reappointment for to a three-year term ending December 31st of '24, George Bergliner and Michael O'Brien. The Delaware County Planning Board, a three-year term ending December 31st of '24. Reappoint R. Edell. Health Services Advisory Board, a two-year term ending December 31st of '23. I'd like to reappoint Supervisors Betty Scott, Amanda Walsh, Ed Bartosz, Heather Warner, and Kira Shrew. The Soil and Water Conservation District Board, a one-year term ending December 31st The Soil and Water Conservation District Board, a one-year term ending December 31st of 2022, reappoint Supervisor Jim Ellis and Supervisor Jeff Taggart. A three-year term ending December 31st of '24, reappoint Bruce Dolph and Jerome Frame. The Tourism Advisory Board, a three-year term ending December 31st of '24, like to appoint Kim Riera and reappoint Glenn Neelis and Michael Ergos. Are there any committees that need to meet?
Insurance and make sure our committee agrees right after the meeting.
Executive session.
Oh, we need an executive session. I would like to ask for an executive session, we don't share.
Regarding?
Uh, contract.
Negotiations for nice.
Negotiation for the nicer contract.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.